And we're recording. The recording we need to order is two minutes past ten. We need members that are on Zoom. Let's get up. Is Jonathan Gale, our ADA coordinator, Alice Susan, Nancy Gulak, Carrie Mesterday. And that looks like that is it. What I said for example, quite a relief. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the color of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You might have to think of it.
So I just want to let this end, my goodness, most horrendous. Okay. So, uh, so let's say if, oh, if you can, you know, if you have anything to add at the end, but, um, so I believe, yes, yesterday, the town account, I emailed out to all departments. Uh, come on. I emailed out to all departments, the, uh, the year-to-date expenditures for the first three months of the fiscal year. Uh, so if you have, uh, if your department, if your department has not received anything, or if you have any, uh, any questions on whatever your expenses show, uh, if you can reach out to the town account, but we wanna, uh, get back to sending everything out on a monthly basis, uh, so we can keep track of, uh, so we can keep track and
I can understand.
funding and make sure we're trending, uh, getting as far, uh, as we really should be. Uh, uh, you're giving out places in the fiscal year, so, uh, we're very into that. Uh, we've been working with, um, um, uh, uh, company consultants. Um, and then the next few months will be more, you know, additional processes and controls that, uh, hopefully will make all of our fiscal tracking processes healthier and stronger. Um, it's also expected that, um, it's also expected by the end of this month, uh, uh, the financial manag-, the financial management review, uh, that will, uh, that I will be working with the Department of Revenue to complete, uh, will be getting started. Uh, that process is anticipated to take a few months, but they'll be looking, uh, at our financial process, at, uh, they'll be looking at revenue generating and our revenue, and our revenue projection process as well. Uh, they'll be looking at internal controls, um, and everything like, so this is something that we're really, I'm excited to get off the ground as well, uh, especially with our capital projects, uh, and the rev- of the revenue, we're going to need to start funding those. Uh, but also, uh, yeah, our internal controls and the processes that we have in place really to keep track of spending throughout the year, but I'm really excited about this, and it'll, uh, I think, uh, it'll lead to some changes, uh, but I think it'll be a really healthy process, um, and help us actually grow and get stronger as well, so.
If I could, this, uh, thanks, you know, for sending that report out, because you know, uh, with your practices and trying to get away from that, and I think it's very important that you know what you expect so far, what the guys about, so we can, uh, we can.
Of course, yep, and that's something I'd like to continue, as Mike said, a few monthly, so everyone knows kind of where they stand.
Thank you.
Um, uh, uh, so definitely with that, uh, when I, I would come to at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, I believe it was either the end of May or the beginning of June, uh, you sent out the process, you sent out the process for year-end spending, um, in terms, uh, in terms of getting, uh, like, uh, like any of the unpaid bills um, in, uh, into the town account's office. Um, uh, you're, you also outlined the classes for encumbrances at the end of fiscal year twenty-one as well. Uh, we had, we had a few instances, uh, like where we, where we did receive un- where we did receive a bill, uh, for, and, uh, so something that occurred, um, in the last fiscal year way after the, the- way after the start of the new fiscal year, uh, so there were a few instances of that, uh, that we have re- that we have recently been made aware of. Um, a few cases we've been able to handle internally, uh, but there's been another case where we have not, so, uh, that as we move forward in the new fiscal year, um, I just want to, uh, that actually share with everybody so we can all anticipate, uh, based on, uh, you, uh, you, uh, you having, um, I'm ha- I'm having, you know, here, uh, that I think a lot of the flexibility that we have with Chris is gonna be no longer. Uh, then, uh, I can frankly, in some ways, I think, uh, the flexibility, uh, that we all have with Chris in some cases, uh, we are now actually learning, uh, actually more about, uh, can we have an opportunity really to move forward uh, in a longer way as well, so, uh, so that being said, we're dealing with the prior year's bills uh, that, uh, we have now, we have a plan to do, uh, we have a plan to deal with that. Uh, but just, uh, uh, as we move forward, I know in end of fiscal year twenty-two, um, um, it's a little bit of a kind of way, but as we, oh, you know, as we move, as we move closer to that, we will have, we will have a much more tighter, uh, encumbrance process, uh, uh, that we will pay, uh, then, uh, we will get out to everybody, uh, uh, and the rules that we're gonna have, uh, uh, our encumbrances are gonna be stricter than what we have had in the last few years. Uh, you know, but again, uh, I think that's gonna be healthy, that will put us, uh, I believe more aligned with where, uh, the first, uh, actually more aligned with where we need to be, uh, and go forward from there, and so as we go forward, um, especially as we, um, especially as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, uh, we'll be getting all of that information, you know, I mean, the expectations about, uh, all of that as well. Um, so then moving on, uh, I think, three weeks ago now, uh, I sent out, uh, uh, the capital, uh, the capital outlay committee request, uh, to all, to all department boards and committees. Uh, uh, and we are beginning a capital planning process, which, um, has been a long time in the making, and, uh, we're trying to really chart our capital planning for the next five fiscal years. Uh, obviously, how we start, uh, in FY twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, we have, uh, we have a lot of different projects that are bubbling up all over us, you know. Uh, you know, and really, we want to start planning, uh, how we have to order them, how we're gonna fund them, uh, and what options we have to fund them, what don't have, um, uh, you know, uh, in the next few months and in the coming years as well. Uh, we actually had a really good meeting yesterday afternoon, but right back to that. Uh, from talking about, uh, talking about, uh, with, um, actually a lot of the capital items we have, uh, you could possibility of level giving the state of federal funding, uh, you can help us really accomplish those goals. Uh, in some cases, I think that would be possible, uh, and there are the other cases that, uh, like how many do you expect, uh, our cost, uh, like, whoa, whatever project they would, but be, uh, uh, actually, uh, and I feel like the fund that we're working with her, uh, then, uh, then we're gonna be working with the state, uh, and working with the state to make sure that we're capitalizing, uh, and any other, uh, any funding opportunities, uh, through the state and the federal government that are gonna help us achieve, uh, all the projects that we have in force. Uh, so that being said, uh, we're asking all the times and quarters committees, uh, by November eighteen to send us really their first, uh, first round of, uh, 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 capital spending requests. Even, uh, you know, I mean, if you have, uh, uh, if you have, if you have a power, like, at least just as an example, uh, that had, uh, that had a yearly provision, uh, like a funding once a year, uh, like a cruiser, uh, 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 to the tune of, uh, to the tune of sixty-five thousand dollars, for example, we, uh, actually wanna see, uh, actually five individual requests, uh, go, uh, over the next five fiscal years for food, so we can plan them out. Uh, if you're, uh, if you're a department, uh, you know, and you're aware, um, of a need or a project, not this year, but in FY twenty-five, based on the life cycle, um, of a piece of equipment, uh, uh, if any, uh, if anything else, we want to know about that now, so we can begin planning for that now. Um, uh, and some departments, uh, some departments might need a building. Uh, I know, uh, I know for the highway department, there's been talked about a high, there's been talked about a hot, uh, 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 yeah, much more on highway, you're right. There's been talked about a higher time, uh, and the need of our library, obviously, uh, uh, the fucking fourth one as well. Uh, but at this point, and I'm happy to work with anybody, uh, we should be, uh, anticipating some type of feasibility studies uh, for each of these buildings, so we can bring in, uh, architect and engineer. Uh, uh, you, uh, can really begin evaluating what exactly where we are, uh, what our options and alternatives might be. Uh, if you have a possibility that we could, uh, have, based on what we have, the buildings we have, we can work with them. Uh, uh, should we consider a location diesel, uh, 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 of a trad-, of a traditional feasibility study? Uh, so like if, uh, like if I were the department that I mentioned, especially, uh, as we go forward to, uh, November eighteen, they, uh, think about actually, uh, you know, having a feasibility study or something, uh, like funding, oh, yeah, funding center, so we can begin, uh, yeah, can you plan these things forward? Uh, uh, and having things that we need to have at this point. Uh, does anyone have any questions on, uh, on the process? Uh, the type of projects that are gonna be funded through capital planning, capital outlay? Uh, uh, and how they're entertaining going forward and, um, that thing at all?
When was it? Do we begin on the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth?
November eighteen.
November eighteen, yes, that was your date.
Yep.
I do have a question.
Mm-hmm.
The workers, they don't have to submit to us because they're.
Yeah, exactly.
They're set, so we all know what their plans are.
Uh, so they're set with, from a capital planning process, um, I think where they, where I envision the possibility for them to intertwine, uh, okay, it's in our, uh, it's, it's in the federal, uh, funding process.
That being said, maybe like, Mr. Chico just said.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, have you heard from the school department, this stuff?
Uh, we have, uh, uh, we've, uh, uh, consent email, uh, that, I mean, to our, uh, our department boards and committees to include in the school department.
That's one more question.
So the ones that won't be included, uh, uh, capital plan, they will probably be included, um, in some way, shape, and form, uh, uh, in terms of, in terms of our federal, in terms of the federal funding process, but the school district, uh, uh, is a part of the capital planning process, uh, that, uh, and they were notified and they were, I'm invited to submit their priorities as well, uh, they reached out to the superintendent, to the business manager, the assistant superintendent, um, and I, um, I believe Tom O'Quinn as well, because he's a member of our capital, like, committees at the school, uh, it's important for them to be involved, uh, and, uh, and for many reasons, it's important for them to provide feedback uh, on our projects that relate to the school as we go, so we don't actually have any surprises at any point in time.
Which is what we've done in the past with the modules, that we were surprised and all of a sudden we, like, six floor rooms and the town of, uh, bank had paid for it, wasn't the school, and it wasn't the whole kind of bank, but it's. Yeah, we wanted to make contact, planning, uh, for that, and perhaps if there's water versus modules, you know, that doesn't matter.
So again, it's up to every individual department, uh, reportedly, I mean, I know from, uh, high level where I need to, uh, through this process, uh, you're, we're expecting, uh, you know, that our boards and committees in other departments are gonna take some responsibility as well.
Are you done, uh, Mike?
I do have a question, but it's different, um, it's something that I found, it's, um, how the revenue were anticipated date as to when they will certify free cash?
So like at this point, when we knew, uh, that, uh, actually heading into this whole process, because of the time, because of the, because of the transitions in our financial team that happened over the summer, uh, yeah, we all knew we were gonna be running up to the wire and having that done, uh, so it's anticipated that, it's anticipated and being planned for at this point, uh, that we will have, uh, that we will have a free cash certification request, uh, into the Department of Revenue by next week.
So it hasn't been submitted yet?
So it, it hasn't, uh, done yet, but that's not abnormal at all, uh, we're gonna be running, oh, yeah, I'll actually feel it close to the special town meeting, but where we are now? Oh, it's not, so it's all uncommon for communities who have a special town meeting in the fall? Uh, yeah, but it's not uncommon that we're here right now and we, um, and our town accountants is finalizing the free cash, uh, it's finalizing our free cash submission number, uh, it will have, it will have that in the next week, we, uh, the DOR has a process where we can let them know that we have an upcoming special town meeting planned, uh, and they will help, and they will help to expedite that certification.
Oh, I know, I know. Is that, I mean, policies that the bylaws that the town has, can we ask the town meeting if it's not certified?
And so if it isn't certified, I mean, you can't have a town meeting, you can, I mean, yeah, uh, I'll actually spend money that's, uh, you're not physically available at that point.
All right, thank you.
And we anticipate next year to be in better shape as far as submitting anything else, was the transition actually causes somewhat of a problem?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, like I said, DOR will prioritize us, so we notify the government, special town meeting on November first, and we anticipate, you know, from that, uh, before that.
Oh, yeah, and when we presented to the Finkman back then, uh, back in July, um, and when, uh, when we anticipated, um, uh, the special town meeting date for November first as well, we knew, uh, oh, yeah, it wasn't a secret that we'd be racing up to the wire, uh, just because when I knew town accountants, uh, was absolutely phenomenal, I have to say, as well. Uh, when I, so the timing, when I knew town accountants started, oh, yeah, it just, oh, yeah, it just really lent itself to being, uh, in this place at this point in time, but this is something that, uh, I've expected and a lot of it is expected to be here right now.
And we don't anticipate this next year?
No.
So, that's what. Anything else, then, you have on that?
I don't have anything else on that, no.
Who's getting COVID, uh, nineteen?
It's a bit hard to call. Well, I'll try to do it, because I was expecting Todd to be here.
Yes.
Oh, he's gonna do it.
Second.
I know, it's only cases are down.
Yeah, so, uh, cases are down for the last four or five days, um, we are still doing the market racing seven days a week, as we're closing up people two weeks ago, but now we're in there, but we see it hitting a lot of families and tearing through their house, like one after another, after another still, but, schools are starting up with their dances and events and all that kind of stuff, so it's been a little bit chaotic, but otherwise, the numbers are down the last five days.
Does that mean you're in the other, or we just put them?
Well, it's based on two weeks of the numbers, and they don't use those metrics anymore, they stopped using them, but to be, we got to be less than twenty-five cases in the last two weeks, I don't think we're there yet, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're higher than we're the state rate, I think we're.
Oh, we're like triple the state rate.
Right, by, by state, uh, two something, right.
Yeah, and we're like almost states.
We moved to this, more people are being vaccinated, I think we're at fifty-six percent.
Yeah, it's still slow.
Still slow, but in fact, the state, I reckon, the state is almost close to seventy, but I'm not, um, but the numbers are beating up a little bit for more vaccinations.
Yep. So the other thing I just want to add, uh, the state, I believe, the end of last week, they extended the COVID, they extended the COVID leave, the COVID leave time, uh, to actually, uh, leave the amount of equal of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, so, uh, 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 that means, uh, employees, uh, who are suspected of having COVID, or, uh, their questions, their, their contact, like, uh, any of those issues, uh, they will have the equivalent of the FFC out of the plan back, uh, like, you know, employees will be able to use that time, uh, like, through the end of, through the end of April, based on the state law, uh, I think, that appears Monday, I think it was like just signed by, uh, into law by the governor on Monday. I just wanna say, like, so I'll be getting information out to, uh, all, uh, employees and departments on that as well, because, uh, yeah, like, as we go, and we've had a few, uh, instances in the last few weeks where, uh, like, my employee either had symptoms or they were known to, uh, you know, have, like, a really good chance, oh, you know, like, of getting COVID. Uh, so like we, uh, and they, you know, we've had employees whose, who students, um, have had to, uh, have had to either quarantine or be tested as well, so the, the extension of that time allows them to have that time available for their family members as well, uh, so we will be getting that information out, um, and, um, and as I mentioned, I believe, uh, the updated state, the updated state law goes till April, in terms of when, in terms of the length of time that, that, uh, yeah, time, if you will, was available, so. I just wanted to add that.
Uh, just one more thing, so if anybody feels that they might need to be in isolation or quarantined because they either have symptoms of something, or they're near somebody with symptoms, whether it's a department head or whether it's an employee, have, call me.
Yeah.
Because your vaccination status, your symptoms, whatever, is your business, and it stays with me. If you take supervisor, or all of a sudden word spreads, and now you've got a rumor on your hands, and it's like, why is she at work today? I saw her coughing yesterday or whatever, so have everything get followed through me, and then I can let you know what to do, and if they have any questions, they can talk to me. Your, it's in your personal business, it's your personal business, so, um, have it come through me. And that goes for the property head to employees, so.
Thank you.
And if people in this room can attest, I do answer the phone at eight, ten o'clock at night, when people call and ask me questions about, um, COVID, so.
I should try it in the morning on time.
You should try it. I mean, you're actually a health inspector.
I don't answer for it. Are you, are we all done there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll stop talking now.
You guys from the department, I'm gonna start with those on, uh, Zoom, so, uh, Carrie, you have a report for the ZBA and, or, for planning board?
So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, ZBA, let's see, we have two applications, one for Frontage on Brook Street for a one-house buildable lot, um, and then I have another application for a variance to cross-residential to get to industrial for, um, a potential, um, marijuana cultivation, um, facility on William Street, um, so that's coming up on October twenty-seventh. Um, so those are the two things that I have for ZBA, excuse me for one second. Sorry, I just wanted to silence that, um, that's really it for ZBA. Um, get a lot of phone calls on questions on how to apply for applications, but still haven't seen a lot. Um, we do have a public hearing coming up for the planning board for an amendment to the kennel bylaw, which will help with the ZBA side on special permits for personal kennels, so that'll be good, hopefully it passes. Um, so now on the planning board side, Chairman Rhines wanted me to send his sorries or apologies for not being able to make today. Um, so we have a very busy month for planning, I have four public hearings, a continued public hearing, Forest Hills, and, um, a couple formees coming up this month, but we have, as most of you know, Brook Street Solar has submitted a major modification to, um, their site plan and special permit because they want to install energy storage units, um, so that public hearing is gonna be on October twentieth. Um, we also have, forgive me. All right, so we also have, um, the public hearing for the roadway acceptance for Dyton Woods Road and Dyton Woods Circle. Um, it looks like everything is all set on that, so I don't see, I haven't heard anything on any issues. Um, and then, as I said, the zoning bylaw amendment, and then the continuation of the Forest Hills matter. Um, they did advise us last month that it looks like they only had a couple more comments, and then they were gonna be ready to go. We'll see, I haven't heard anything from them, so maybe they will, maybe they won't, we'll see. Um, and then, also, that meeting is actually gonna be at the middle school, because it's, I, if Forest Hills goes through, I anticipate it's gonna be a big meeting, so on, that'll be on October twentieth at six o'clock at the middle school. Um, that's about it, that's what I have.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Gulak?
Yes.
Do you have anything on Stormwater or Tax Assessors?
Yes, um, if we're still in session at, uh, eleven, I gotta leave, because we get a special MMA meeting, uh, today from eleven to one, um, excuse me, Water of Assessors. Uh, we got notified this week from the Department of Revenue that the LA Three Sales Report that was submitted has been approved by GOR. Uh, we'll be working on the new growth number, um, I think most of you know that Carol has retired, uh, from both positions, the appointed and the elected positions. Uh, Stephanie Scheckter has returned to Dyton as the full-time appointed assessor. We have a vacancy now in the elected assessors position, and we're hoping to fill that as soon as possible. So that, um, that position will, will just be an appointment until the election next, uh, April. And anyone applying needs to know that there is training required, because you must complete at least courses one and four to be certified with the Department of Revenue, so that you can actually work on setting a tax rate. Uh, Stormwater Committee, the MS Four has been filed. Um, as Carrie mentioned, the Brook Street Solar thing, as far as Stormwater goes, we're all set until, um, unless and until something comes out of the, uh, planning board relative to their latest proposal, in which case that, um, Stormwater, uh, they have to meet, they may have to meet with Stormwater and Conservation again, uh, but we'll know that after the meeting on October twentieth, I assume. Also, um, the Stormwater Committee is meeting on October the twentieth, it's a lot going on on the twentieth at one o'clock at the Old Town Hall, and we have an interesting proposal that's been submitted by a property owner on Brick Street. And, uh, this is something that's going to be discussed, because there's a, uh, a proposal for, um, I will call it, um, educational, um, professional type, um, project there, uh, as opposed to a housing development, so, um, again, that's, uh, October twentieth, one PM at the Old Town Hall. And, uh, other than that, we just follow it, following up on existing. And uh other than that, we just follow it, following up on existing. Stormwater issues, uh finalizing some of the projects that we had. Getting everything resolved, hopefully, so that's where we are.
Thank you, Mrs. Gula, uh Jonathan Gale?
Uh can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, we can.
Okay, um so first things, I guess would be to say that we have ordered the. Braille labeling for the outdoor drop boxes uh down at the lower level of Town Hall, they should be in within a few days and then I will. Uh collaborate with uh Jim and or Tom to. Arrange putting them on the boxes so that uh people who are visually impaired can have the same access to the boxes. I am in the process of working with the middle school right now on redoing the ramp areas, this would be for the main door. Uh the a- auditorium as well or cafeteria entrance as well. Uh and also the the backdoor areas where they have emergency areas so that those ramps would be surfaced as well. I'm hoping um weather permitting and approval permitting that that is a project that can be wrapped up. And uh put together before the beginning of the winter, it's 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 long overdue and it's a, it's a temporary fix now, uh but something that needs to be done. The grant application for the Mass Office of Disability is due at the end of this week. Um a huge thank you to Mike and Brett and Kevin as well for the enormous work that uh they especially have put into. Doing this project uh to get this grant in, grant in on time, um it's a great effort on everybody's part, hopefully we will get it. Um I think we make a very good case in the submission that we're putting in. Um gotten several calls of people asking about the potential for a future signage on different streets for. Handicap signage or slowdown signage related to persons with disability and so forth, so something to be visited, discussed on a later date. Working a little bit with the the school department has now talked about wanting to uh discuss with us ways to resurface the playground at the elementary school. Uh to make it more comfortable for individuals with with disability as well. Um the Best Buddies Program uh through the work that uh Kevin has done through Parks and Rec. Uh Best Buddies Program and Special Olympics have expressed interest in working with this, as I mentioned before, and those conversations are still ongoing. Um just lots of different little things going on, um unfortunately, uh COD has not had a meeting recently. Um I'm hoping to have our our next meeting two weeks, in about two weeks or so, but that's, that's a rough update.
Uh thank you, Jonathan, uh Tom Barkin?
Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks for having me, I do have a lot of good news to to pass along. Which I think is good to have positive, some positive news. Um we're moving ahead, we're gonna have a public hearing at our next regular meeting, it'll be before. Our next regular meeting, we're in the process of uh. Putting uh the ad in the paper. But should the timeline, it seems like it's on track, two weeks before the meeting. I don't, somebody told me it was three weeks, but I was told by Tim Reins it was two weeks. So basically, Tim is the one mentoring, uh you know, it's a lot to learn CPC, so we're still learning. But we have finally, we did have a meeting finally and uh we had, we used our own laptop. Because of uh. You know, it's hard to get this thing put together, but they, we, the other good part of it is we have space is gonna be available at prime time. From my, what I understand and uh it looks like it's gonna work out, they're gonna put a workstation in the. Prime time conference room. And we're going back to our regular meeting night, which is the third Thursday. If I'm not correct, correct me on that, uh Mr. Mullin, but I, we, we spoke about different things with uh Leanne. Uh over at the Board of Selectmen's Office, uh Mr. Mullin's been working with us. For months, trying to get this thing. Straightened out because CPC is an important part of the community. And um we're also starting a a campaign where we're gonna reach out more to the community. Um a lot of people don't really know what the CPC is. Um we wanna educate the public a little more um and know that people are welcome to approach us. We are an advisory board. That works with the state and we work with the town. And if anyone that meets the parameters to qualify for these uh funds. Which is basically the people's money, but I mean, it's available to the town and to the people of the town. Um our first uh process, this uh round, past round is the town clerk. Approaches in conjunct.
Oh, you're frozen, Tom.
No, he lives in Dyton, like. Uh in a woods near me.
Yeah. With the story. So basically, I'm trying to be brief, but I'll, I'll, I'll wrap it up for you. So basically, the town clerk um processed. He started, he started the process. And just remember, I think, uh Mr. Pacheco, you did mention in my behalf that I was. Away, I had a family uh medical thing going on out in Colorado. I also, you know, we don't have to share it, but um I've had my own uh stuff that I talked about with the board. And the, I'm sure they informed the town administrator and it's just, it's no big deal. Everything's fine, uh we're getting back on track. We just weren't able to meet and during the summer, there was really nothing going on anyhow, I was getting a lot of phone calls, where's Tom Burke on? Well, I was in Colorado, so I tried to run a meeting remotely and it didn't work out because they didn't have a quarrel. So basically, we tried, you know, I mean, the people get nervous when they don't hear from you and they're worried about you, they're worried about the money. Basically, the money, we don't handle cash. We basically work with the state, everything is done through our accounting department. And we've been in a couple of uh transitional accounting situations, I still don't have all my numbers put together yet. I've been in contact with the new town accountant, I went into the office. Don't forget, I have a part-time secretary clerk, clerk secretary, I don't even know. Her exact title or what level clerk, but she's not in the union, but she gets paid the same rate as the union clerk, but I don't know what level clerk. But we're getting all that pulled together, so um and I'm fairly new in the position of chairman, I've been on the committee for a while. So bottom line is, things are moving forward, it's positive movement, it's moving in the right direction, it's not negative, it's all positive. Uh you know, my information is on uh, I believe, the webpage or whatever's listed in the town. And you can call me, anybody can call me, reach out, um it's not a. State secret, the CPC is open to, open for business. So basically, uh you do have to get the stuff in by uh November, you know, the first town meeting, I think November first is the dead, drop dead date to get your applications in. So so far, we've had one application, it's being processed. And it's moving forward and it's gonna benefit that benefit the towns, people, the town clerk is spearheading it. In conjunction with Historical. And uh it's, everything's working well, so um we're moving forward. I think we have a couple, oh, Tim Reins is back as an at-large member. Per the Board of Selectmen, they appointed him to come back as an at-large member and I believe Mr. Rose is supposed to represent the Park and Rec. And I'm not gonna list everyone on there, it's on the web, it's on the webpage or the town page or whatever. Are there any questions?
I don't think so, thank you very much, Tom.
All right, thank you, sir.
Lisa?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Tom, Lisa, do you have anything, conservation?
Yeah, I do, um so we have a couple of public hearings being continued for our subdivisions, including Hunter's Hill. And Forest Hill Estates, uh as you know, Forest Hill Estates was um. Was continuing with the planning board and they've asked our consultants, Beta Group, to hold off on review. Um until they have completed their planning board review. Uh long-built homes, uh they, they're redesigning based on the new feasibility um. Because of the additional wetlands and our peer reviews are doing some initial reviews, there's still. They have a long way to go as far as drainage analysis and things like that, um. And we have a couple of new hearings that are being continued from last week, um but first off, we did, I'm sorry, last month. But first off, we did approve um a notice of intent submitted by VHB on behalf of New England Power Company. For work on um Chestnut Street in association with um. The right-of-way, um just replacing four structures and H with embedded wooden H frames, um. They're replacing them, um and we've approved that um based on. The design and VHB's analysis and um. We feel comfortable approving that, uh the impacts will mostly be temporary for that. Um and then we've um continued two hearings. From Stone Gate Landing, Richard Federoff uh for two house lots. In the past, Richard hasn't come before the Concom for his lots. And um I know he got waivers from the zoning board way back, but um I've asked him to still come before us because he does have. The Wetlands Protection Act to comply with, not just, um you know, I know we've got the waivers from the Concom bylaw, but he does still have the WPA. Regs to comply with, um so we've continued those and um. Till our October meeting, uh which is gonna be October twenty first, by the way, um. And then um at our last meeting, we approved a covert change for TLC development at Zero Horton Street. The developer still has some permitting to do, um which they are in the process of filing or have filed with DEP and Army Corps. And see. Number of enforcement slash follow-up projects here, um. So, you know, I can list them, but you know, if anybody has any questions on what those are, they can also come see me. Um but um the big one would be ten fifty William Street, the Reed Brothers have agreed to comply. Um with removing some fill and um also removing some invasive species. Um along the Segregated River. Um they filed a notice of intent with us yesterday, so that'll be on our October meeting as well, um. And besides the other enforcement issues where we've set deadlines for compliance. Um everything seems to be work, moving on track. One uh that you guys might want to note is two, three, seven, one, County Street Enforcement Order. Uh the commission at their last meeting requested that a lawyer and the um. The Enos um family have, need to uh submit. A restoration plan by November first to us. Um I did get confirmation from the lawyer that he did receive the email requesting that, but I haven't heard anything more. And then the other individual, single-family house lots that are trying to come in compliance. Um I think that's it.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
I don't think Alice is on Zoom very well.
Two years ago, after two years, the Industrial Development Commission had a um. We have pretty much reorganized, the committee is also. Looking uh with the meaning next week to expand the board from five to seven members, and the reason for that. Is that we currently have a member uh this period from planning board, but we would also like to add. The member, the primary chair of Congress in the Russell County Agricultural School. One of our concerns is that as Dyton is growing, as our focus is on industry. Business that we might forget about the agricultural side of the town, we're on history and tradition. And what we can do to help preserve and help some of the farmers in town. We will be reaching out to the Southeast Regional Planning uh Development District for. Help in regards to direction. And informing regional plans and agreements. That is something that Governor Baker is pushing, that is something we discussed at length recently. With Representative Pat Paddy. The need for Dyton to work in some of the smaller towns. To attract business and uh industrial growth in the account. Um we'll also be reaching out to several departments for input regarding business growth. Your future needs and concerns regarding business growth in town again. So I'll be reaching out to some of the department heads. Um to attend some meetings, both to inform and also um some members can ask. A particular business plan, economy, data, what are your concerns? Because we'll be working closely with the planning board. More team effort rather than individual groups operating separately. So I just wanted to let people know that twenty one, we will be reaching out to you, so thank you.
So, how many members do you have in that board now?
Currently five, and we're going to make a recommendation at a meeting, which will be on the eighteenth at seven PM, yeah. To increase the board to seven, you would request the add of a representative from the Bristol Agricultural School. And a representative from the primary junior of Congress, somebody asked why them, we are part of that. It's not just on the maintenance part, okay? This is one, are there any other communities also part of?
So we have an agenda for our next Wednesday, three appointments, but this cycle beyond the Friday?
So, one of the appointments was rescinding of the appointment. Then there were another three, including the A and the Chamber along with uh. Along with Mr. Delphine as well, but Mr. Delphine is already included in the file. Mr. Delphine has been put in the file and then there's an additional two.
So, we can't point them to expanding.
The, the, mind is, the ending, the. That the development industrial, too many already voted to back the main, to expand to. To the board selection so they could be appointed.
So that has the only agenda to expand, I don't, I don't think it was on, the agenda to expand.
So in terms of, something was on the agenda, something was on the agenda by adding them. And apparently we would be expanding whether or not we wanna have a scheduled expanding conversation, I was thinking. That by inherently adding them, the committee would be expanded, but I can do whatever.
But, but yeah, I, I tend to think the word, the board is like, we're going to go to the scene.
And then twenty points, okay. Yes?
Or the procedure?
Yeah, that's right.
So, I hit Dawson and I'll let the, well, five hours of work over this, right?
Yeah, that's um pretty much all I wanted to say, um also my thanks to. Mike and Tom.
Tell me all the.
And here for the patience of. And Karen, for the patience of her colleagues. That's about it. We're tired. We're moving bucks at Main Street. We're starting to bring stuff up, stickers and find spaces for that. And, you know, but we're looking forward to trying to be normal.
I think it's a good idea to have some adult folks and the kids, oh, yeah. Except for the young folks, so that when parents and kids are there, they can sort of take the rest of the time.
Maybe we have some kids' stuff over.
The adults.
Well, if not, anything you decide is okay, especially.
Well, one of the partner agreement served us in town better than mostly for compensation disability plans. And we're planning a veteran's breakfast on the Saturday before Veterans Day, which will be November 6th. It's gonna be at, I don't know the name of the church, but it's on Love Mason. Yeah, Father, Pastor Jack, right?
West End Christian Church. He goes on YouTube.
It's, his name is Pastor Jack.
He's retired now. Yeah, that'll be his father's house.
Okay, said his father's house. I apologize for my, oh, logistics, if you're right.
It'll be in town, so.
Yeah, it'll be for a while. I asked someone one time, how long will it take before I'm not a movie? He says, how long you been here? I said, five years. He said, whoa, wow. I gotta watch it. So, we will be having that on November 6th at 9:00 AM. I'm gonna be sending out notices, um, whether it's a post that I'm preparing to do or, or, um, the time. So, that's what we're doing at this point.
Thank you, buddy. Tom Perry? Anything else?
Couple things. Father walked in for this setting. With Chris, Chris about ten ways. So, that field was my, what Mike presented as far as capitalizing on committee approach, which is great. And I'm still learning how we work with the town administration, no offense. This is another way, and it's gonna be a good thing. But the, the three big projects that need to be considered started back when we had a combination of Sleutman and Board of Health Board, which now is split. So, what again has the situation issue and who's driving the projects?
Yes.
Two devolved landfills. One's, one's a so-called abandoned, one's active as a cat. And the other two projects have a Fremont Street landfill. One's a fuel station, one's a fossil building project. As I would think it still would be probably gonna help, but we may wanna consider somehow a streamlining, because if you get all the boards committees relevant to drive and lead a steering, it'd be really, uh, a little cumbersome to move forward. Maybe it's just a simple vote that we move in that direction with the Board of Health for us and then the business spot goes in your office and you become the driver, I'm not sure, or I am. You know, coordinating the local weekends for the local farmers and also for the state and federal committee. It, it can't, can't get cumbersome, but I think your office may be more fitting. But that's why I bring it up now, so we all can hear what's gonna happen.
So in terms of my view, out of my recommendation, we could, I, I, obviously based on the projects that you just, oh, all, all in common, we need to be coordinated with the Board of Health Board in terms of the trapping of the landfills, all the status of DPP and all that. So, I kind of think of course, we obviously need to get votes. I'll again, I'll definitely catch with probably, I'll include it in everything else. And I think there's a way to do that together at this point. So everybody's in the same mood.
So what's the next step? Do you fill up paperwork initiated in the Capitol Hall, or wait for the Board of Health initiated? That's one of the things that this is where we have to speak.
I, 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 well, I'm not gonna come from it would be initiated by you, uh, through quotes and I'd be happy. I'd be happy to work with you to get the quotes. I can then have the quotes for the projects that are needed. I can then go and pass the Board of Health as we go forward. We first need, I can order a family to begin. Uh, other than anything else, when I'm done, we need to have the quotes so we can begin planning at this point.
Now, where, I'm sorry, term we left off, unless we schedule the heavenly form meet with E.P.
Yes.
That's gonna help set the compass and then we can create the scope of work from there.
Okay.
We, that's an important step.
Yep.
So because of COVID, handing administrators, handing boards, uh, it's already getting a lot, you know. So, and, and not, not for Mr. Hall on the spot, not, he's, he was handing some of these projects, he said, oh, I'm.
Yep.
And it becomes stagnant and it's not your fault.
Yep.
But we sort of required on status of, you know, that they don't wanna. Yeah, you, you want, yeah, I think he wanted to lead the other over the same ways today.
Okay. So let's do the workshop about a month ago to DEP. I forget to go to the meeting, I reached out just to set up a meeting, um, to pick up on where we left off at the meeting that was gonna be scheduled like right the week that COVID started. I reached out to her a month ago and I'll come back, I'll follow up with her again to be able to get that fixed off.
Uh, I wouldn't wait. I, I, I would, someone's gonna give a phone call, because a lot of people are not there in the board and not replaced yet, and you'll never, you'll never get a response.
Yes.
Unfortunately, they actually had some, uh, people pass away over there and they're not replaced.
Is that a town loss?
So it sounds like I gotta, I'm gonna change the projects, but you're letting the target for need to be.
Yes.
Okay, precisely, yes. Yep, I have, uh, along with reports coming out from Gial, yes.
It's good.
Yeah. I tried to get projects in Congress that Gabrielle from Middle and Center, I don't think it happened. So it, my only point, it would probably be okay, but you notice my, my color board lines are even bigger, which is important because it affects everyone in this room trying to finish the year.
Yep.
Given things.
Yeah, no, and I, and that's why, of my opinion, that entire encompassing process just my opinion, based on the Gabrielle issue alone, was way more loosey-goosey than it needed to be, in my opinion, and this.
Right. So we, you and I just sent an email on the day on Brick Street, and it's a similar thing happened. There were people that, that were supposed to Gabrielle, that's a whole other.
Yes, the same thing, yep.
Same thing, so, but, but it's, it's a ripple effect from COVID and how the common sense experience. We're gonna be very close to finishing the year on 42.
Yeah, can we close the finishing this year on 4th of June?
42, by, by.
Oh, yes. But we can keep on with that together.
Yes, yes, it's kind of early to have that kind of announcement, but I just.
No, I get it.
Yeah, we're talking about a full grain difference. If that was in Congress, that would be.
I, yeah, well, I get it.
The other thing was that, and you may not know, my former retired officially is this Halloween, but he's already gone. So that means my whole department is eight years younger in that department. So we have a very younger department. That's why we got over, and we wish those, those are actually healthy to retire.
I didn't follow up to you on that at the last line.
Andrew.
You're yours now.
So we're talking to the town, the final one, this is the one, we go way back, you know, we use a complaint to do the rest of the, what this and that. The town size, we're down to two main center, Fremont, Williams last, and the whole town looked really nice, probably within three or four more weeks. Uh, we're already, uh, we're well in the way getting snow ready. And Sleutman's helped last week, we're already getting a much better response from the contractors, but some people uh, we discuss, chase always the contract stuff, get that slip by and get word from those. So, we'll get you, end of the winter now.
Thank you, thanks so much.
So I just kind of wanted to add up there, first, what Tom Perry was talking about. Endurance regional disputes, another dispute, but who's gonna do what? Whether it be the Board of Health or the Highway Department, where are we tracking? All volume and costs and so forth and so on. We do rely on Tom for various things, because of his number, number of years' experience over the transfer station. I, I think we do need to sit down with Tom, the Board of Health himself, and decide who's gonna do what. Either cut the strings from each other or, you know, going forward, see who's, who's gonna be responsible for what's going on up there. I agree with what he said about DEP, I think that should fall, uh, in the higher food chain, such as the South or the Board of Assembly. So we can arrange that in the future and hopefully we can get it more streamlined as, as Tom said and move forward. We did have four of the town's applicants, two have withdrawn, and we have two left. I don't know if Ross has talked to you yet, we just got a call in this morning with the second one. Uh, it's gonna be on Thursday at 3:00 and 3:30 next week. Things hopefully are slowing down. In the month of September, there were 16 PRAC tests that we had to get out there and do. Now, when you think an average of, of minimum two hours each, that, that cuts into a lot of time that is needed in other areas that, so do the best we can with the 28 hours. I've been out helping them with, you know, watching the protocol down. It's pretty simple stuff, they don't need any qualifications. This month, it's clear we've only done one so far, so hopefully they'll be slowing down and give Todd some time to do some of the other things. Some of the things we're gonna be doing, got a review of the regs and probably adding or mending some of the local regs that we have, and we plan on that when we have that meeting to invite all the engineers and installers for their input, so it's not a surprise uh, when they see a new reg out there. Uh, we did that last time, we invited them all and I think four or five showed up. So, you know, we do the best we can to try to get the information out there. If they don't show up, they shouldn't be surprised that these things have changed, you know. We also wanna work on, I brought this up at our last meeting, handbook, guide, or whatever you wanna call it, to PRAC tests and SEPT systems. What to expect going forward, if you wanna do that, how the PRAC tests work. And, you know, within that book, it will be what is considered new construction. Uh, it's going to be a definition as agreed to by all three members of the Board of Health, um, the health agent. So, uh, there is a definition right now on Title V, but there's so many areas that you have to make a decision. You have to call whether it's new construction or, or a repair, which affects the cost of, uh, the PRAC test. I'm sure Todd may have something else he wants to add to this, but to close my portion, and I'm happy to see that all the committees are moving forward and making progress and finally stepping up to the, we're in the 21st century, I guess. So, that being said, I plan on reviving the 40B committee. I think it's time again. This was created in, I don't know, 10, 2006, 2007, maybe.
Somewhere around.
Yeah, and I mean, uh, 40B came into state in Massachusetts in 1969, and it didn't get established in the town of Dyke until 2006 or 2007, when I was a Sleutman at the time. I reached out to some of the members, I didn't get responses from some. Uh, but when we started the committee, right now I'm looking at seven different members. I'll just put it out there as a heads up, who I'll be, what other boards or committees I'll, I'll be reaching out to for a, for a member to sit on the committee. Council on Aging Planning Board, Conservation Commission, ZBA, Board of Selectmen, ADA rep, and one member at large, so the seven. It worked well the last time when we started it, it was a representative from each one of the boards and involved with, uh, planning and so forth. So I, I hope that we can fill up the board again with the seven people, so. I know Ken served on it, Jonathan Gale served on it. Uh, we had members from, anybody else here serve on? No. So, I'll be planning on doing that soon. And I, I don't, I believe the affordable housing, uh, the housing production plan is not due till 2023, I believe. How do we make up with, uh, uh, DXCD on this?
Waiting to hear back, right? Thought it was about three weeks ago now, um, so deep, I think, up there.
Yeah, for some reason, you recall, we did the 2019 one and then saying they never got it. So that's lost somewhere in, in here, sir, or in Boston. But we, we did sit on it, we have, uh, proof that votes were taken on the board, so I'm hoping this works out, okay?
Yeah, the last one that they officially approved was 2014, I think. And then we did it again and we submitted it. And they're still on based on the 2014, so hopefully we'll get it next month.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Yes, in regards to the, um, definition of new and replacement in regards to the book, if you're publishing the PRACs and, or has the STAG been part of those discussions and, and planning and lighting up that?
Well, he normally comes to our meetings, so I will ask him for that one.
Is there any confusion, what we don't say?
Thank you, Tom. Tom, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, just, uh, one quick thing is that we just received today our first application for retail marijuana facility in town. Uh, it was electronic, we still don't have to check or, I mean, we're not saying it yet, but we just got that today. So we're gonna be talking, boarding on that at the next Board of Health meeting. And I wanted to go drop some words of, we're looking forward to trying to be normal. It's been just one heck of a ride and just wanting to go to just kind of doing things the way we're doing, so. That's all.
Thank you, Tom. Keep it down.
Yeah, um, a couple of things. One, as you know, Ted Cronin promoted, uh, since he's been there and just started, he's brought a lot of new ideas already for the department. So I just wanted to let you know that he's got some things he's doing and, uh, doing a terrific job with this right now, and I'm happy that he's at, in that position. Uh, second, SRO's, we started, so we have a new SRO again at, at high school. It's, uh, Troma Hathaway, I've heard a couple of good things on that for him too. So that's working out well for the problem in the town, in the schools. And then the last thing is on October 23rd, uh, between 10 and 2, we're gonna have a take-back drug for the public to bring all their prescription drugs, if they have to get rid of them, um, to the station. I'll give it all the information, give it a count, maybe you can make an announcement at the, you know, meeting. But is it this week, next week, right? Okay, so I'll get all that to her so you guys can announce that, um, that we're gonna do that from October 23rd between 10 and 2 at the station.
Very good.
Okay, and other than that, um, thank you.
Mark?
Um, so as Mr. Workman said, I do, I did go to them last month for our CPC request. And also I have another one in the works, which we'll make its way to them eventually, going through the historical commission first for that. Last week we decided online payments, so excited to be there and off to that service. This week we're working on staffing for the special town meeting and get that all prepared and underway. I will look forward to after the special town meeting, hopefully we'll have a new dotted license. Hopefully we'll have new dog licensing software or some new fees for dog licensing. I just want to say at this point, I think I've worked with every department for a couple of PRAC requests to get them almost, almost daily, and everyone's gone out of their way to buy us everything they've asked for. So thank you. I know a lot of times you're very involved, and everyone has really gone above and beyond to get us what we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Last one at least, a Stacy.
Um, not much. I did find out that I can house ten dogs in the shelter if I need to, with a little bit of creativity. I only have one dog left. It's all gone home, so that's good. Most of my calls right now are wildlife, wildlife's out. Doing my fall stuff to get ready for winter. I have had six Wichitas that have been poisoned because people are not happy with me telling them they have to look with them or they have to call a trapper. So, so they've taken the poison route, which is worse than having a trapper do it. So, yeah. Poison's not good for anybody involved, because then we've had, I've had a hurt hawk and a very sick owl because of poison, so. And we've lost some fox babies because of poison.
And that's, it's expected trip, or does he?
Yes, expected trip. He's, he's properly under control, which means he can go out and you can take them off property. But once he removes the property, he needs to euthanize them.
I, I've used them in a task, so presently I'm catching them and releasing them in my yacht.
Right.
Put it on my yacht.
Right, because they can't release them. Right, you can't release them at the edge of your property, just if you want them to live. People can't seem to coexist with them, so.
Well, it's very frustrating when you have a special dog.
I understand that.
But I, past couple of years, I, instead of using a sense of great, I've packed them myself and released them. I caught a, you know, I caught a fox at the same time, and obviously I've released that too. This probably was only a week ago.
Yes.
But we still managed to get back there. So that's frustrating, I understand. Is there anything?
I just wanted to add to what Stacy had said a moment ago about poisoning. One of the several ways to get rid of rodents is probably people that poison. Problem with poison is the raptors are eating, eating poisoned rats, pill moist or whatever. And that's killing off the raptors, our eagles, our hawks, so forth and so on, so. So we try to find another method of getting rid of your rodents or your brim, or whatever you want to call that doesn't back out wildlife, so.
Is there anything else? We have seven. How the gallows came back? I don't have a, I think it came rolling to the gym, so I'll step down the second half. But so, so I said, let them help. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
All right. Thanks, Tom.